When I get it, we say it's on. We'll call the order of this meeting of Butler County Commissioners. Would you please rise, promote a silent prayer following that pledge of allegiance? Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public comment, any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Anderson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Solicitor, could you kindly give me the thirty second or what day today is?
Certainly.
I keep track of everything. A few announcements today. One is Governor Tom Corbett issued an executive order creating a committee to develop a plan to address Alzheimer's disease and related brain disorders in Pennsylvania. Beth Harold who's here today and our Administrator of Butler County Area Agency on Aging was appointed to that committee and extends an invitation to all Butler County residents to attend one of the local public committee hearings where public comment and input will be gathered. The Alzheimer's Planning Committee hearings will be held on September sixteenth in Clarion at Clarion Hospital and on September seventeenth in Pittsburgh at the University of Pittsburgh Boyan Pitt Building. Key areas for discussion will include what are the needs of Pennsylvanians with Alzheimer's disease, what resources are needed to support Pennsylvanians with Alzheimer's as well as their families and caregivers, and ideas for the state to better respond to the growing number of Pennsylvanians with Alzheimer's. If you need more information, please visit www.aging.state.p a.us. If your family has been impacted by Alzheimer's, your input and voice can be heard to make a difference in the future. Second announcement, on Sunday, September the twenty ninth, will be our sixteenth annual Alameda Fall Fest up at Alameda Park and Pool. There'll be an Alameda Youth Fishing Tournament which starts at noon. There'll be a Fall Fest carp cruise starting at ten a.m., scoot and two five K walk and runs starting at nine a.m., as well as having craft and vendors and live entertainment, lots of activities for the children. If you're interested in being a vendor, please contact the park office at seven-two-four-two-eight-four-five-three-eight-three. Third announcement is that Penn Township Volunteer Fire Department will be holding a golf scramble tournament on September the twenty-third. There'll be a four-man scramble as well as if you want to be a corporate sponsor or an individual golfer, if you're interested, you need to register and apply before September sixteenth. And for information, you can contact the Penn Township Volunteer Fire Department at Proceeds from the tournament will be used to offset the costs associated with the volunteer fire department's upkeep and modernization for its equipment and apparatuses. Last announcement is just a reminder that Butler County's new prescription drug and benefit discount program through Coast to Coast commenced on August the first. You can pick up your free discount card at your library, pharmacy, or any county or municipal office. You can also access information on the county's website. If you go to the main website page, under the Quick Click section on the right, you can go to prescription discount cards and it'll give you more information. And just an important reminder that if you're currently using an ACO card, just simply pick up a Coast to Coast card at your next pharmacy visit. Thank you.
Sorry, Margaret, I skipped the thirty seconds. My bad.
That's right. I don't think I went over three anymore.
You were right on.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we got them. We have minutes from our April-August twelfth meeting and our August fourteenth meeting. Is your motion approved?
My motion is approved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Does the favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. All business.
There's none, Mr. Chairman.
All right, proclamations?
Under proclamations, we have two presentations today. The first presentation is proclamation, a set of proclamations, for September first, two thousand and thirteen, National Police Canine Day in Butler County. Whereas National Police Canine Day is a special day to honor police dogs and drug-bomb-sick dogs and to memorialize those fallen police canines that gave their lives in the line of duty. And whereas this is a day to say thank you to them for putting their lives on the line every day for our freedom and safety. And whereas all of these canines and their handlers have shown bravery and valor in the line of duty and helped the community of Butler County become safer and more secure. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Butler County Commissioners proclaim September first as National Police Canine Day and do hereby honor dog handlers and their faithful canine partners for their service and commitment to our communities within Butler County to help sustain, protect, and safeguard. It's signed by the work officials, William Helmuth Carrier, Jay Dale Finkerson, and James Wilson. And we have representatives from four different units. Butler City, Gunnar is a German Shepherd and Blade is a German Shepherd. Their handlers are Patrolman Ryan Grims and Patrolman David Bellotti. From the Butler County Sheriff's Office, we have Bullet who is a German Shorthaired Pointer. His handler is Sergeant Harriet Calhoun. From Evan City, we have Chaos, a German Shepherd. His handler is Sergeant Donald Myers. And from Jackson Township, we have Hutch, a German Shepherd, who's handled by Officer Von Fulgen. We'd like to ask Commissioners to come up and meet officers and their handlers and represent the proclamations.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you're doing.
And we have Danny Osterman.
I gotta go take, they are giving me my own show. I gotta go do some stuff. Give me a call when Mrs. Dunn, I'll call.
Okay, if any of you officers would like to say anything, would like to please step to the podium, if any of the dogs would like to say something. I know Danny would like to say a few words. Go ahead, step to the podium, Danny.
Wanted Butler County City's Townships Canine Police Officers plus Canine Police Dogs. This is a great honor for me. I want to thank Butler County Chief Clerk, Director of Administration, Amy A. Wilson, for making this day possible. Kimberly D. Dyer, Administrative Assistant to Butler County Commissioner William Helmuth Carrier, for preparing the proclamations. Butler County Sheriff Michael T. Sloop for his hundred percent cooperation, sending correspondence to all Butler County Canine Police Units and the Butler County Commissioners for presenting proclamations to Butler County Canine Police Officers for their unselfish service thus permitting me to present as a gift to all the Butler County Canine Police Officers, a Canine Large Gold Wraith Lapel Pen. The dedication of these Canine Police Officers plus training of these canines is a well-deserved praise. Deceased Canine Rex, Canine Bullet, Canine Hutch, Canine Chaos, Canine Gunnar, Canine Blades' accomplishments are truly amazing. Butler County citizens, taxpayers, and property owners are extremely proud of these Canine Police Officers and their canine partners. This is a courage for Butler County to recognize Canine Police Officers plus canines. This is a public reputation for what they do, protect and serve our citizens of Butler County. Thank you all for what you do. Danny Osterman, Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirty.
Thank you, Danny. Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'd like to say this, I know how hard it is to take care of the animals and I'm especially appreciative. I have a little Abenese dog at home and I know, and my wife does that, that it's really a special duty that you do. It's sort of like a twenty-four hour a day job taking care of the dog and I'm very appreciative that you're willing to do that and I know how, I have some firsthand with Harry, but I'm very appreciative of all you're willing to do that and that sacrifice that that prevails. Thank you very much.
Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. Right. Right.
They're all trying.
Our seventh proclamation for today is Butler County Suicide Awareness Week, September eighth through fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Whereas suicide is the tenth leading cause of all deaths in the United States and the third leading cause of death among individuals between the age of fifteen and twenty-four. And whereas in Butler County, nineteen people have committed suicide in two thousand and twelve. And whereas in the United States, one person commits suicide every fourteen point two minutes. And whereas it's estimated that four point seven-three million people in the United States have lost a loved one to suicide. And whereas individuals who attempt suicide are likely to have mental health and/or drug and alcohol issues. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Butler County Commissioners do hereby deem it fitting and proper to proclaim September eighth through September fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, as Suicide Awareness Week in the county of Butler. And here to accept the proclamation is Amy Peters from our Mental Health Department.
Amy, thanks for all you do in this area for the veterans who are involved.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Sure. Just very quickly, I just wanted to announce on September tenth at five-thirty in Diamond Park, we will have a suicide awareness rally, probably isn't the right word, an event to remember those that we've lost to suicide in the past year. There'll be a speaker, a candlelight vigil, and there'll be resources there for people that need help. So that's on September tenth at five-thirty and there are flyers posted in the courthouse describing that event and we would like everybody to come and participate. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Amy, that is September tenth at five, September tenth, five-thirty, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna be there and I'm really glad to see you. I've never been so intimidated at a meeting than I was before you got here with the dogs. I will admit, I was very intimidated. I was glad they had muscles on, so.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. All right, Dunn.
Commissioners, I have an announcement that's been requested by John Cyphrin, our Director of Veterans Services, who did not be here today. On August twenty-third, the Veterans Services Office of Butler County held its first annual and hopefully annual going forward, Missing in America Project Interment Ceremony. This is a very special event where the remains of ten veterans were interred at the National Cemetery of the Alleghenies in Ridgeville. These are individuals who have served in all four branches of the armed services, including World War II, Vietnam, and the Korean Wars. And there was one female Navy veteran as well. This is an event that has been made possible by a law that was passed by Governor Tom Corbett which allows the pre-nated remains of individuals who are found to be veterans and who are not, there's not a next of kin or legally authorized person to accept those remains, for those remains to be given to the county's Veterans Affairs Office and for them to receive an honorable interment in the National Cemetery in Ridgeville. And this event was televised by Channel Ten Armstrong Cable and it will be aired according to this schedule so that people can watch this. It'll be on today, which is Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, at five p.m. Tomorrow, Thursday, the twenty-ninth, at eight-thirty p.m. Friday, the thirtieth, at five p.m. Saturday, the thirty-first, at eight-thirty p.m. Sunday, the first, at five p.m. And also Thursday, the twenty-ninth, tomorrow, at eleven-thirty a.m. Again, that's on Channel Ten Armstrong Cable. So this is a very solemn and important event to honor veterans who have served Butler County and Mr. Cyphrin, like the residents of Butler County, can note that this is something that we will be doing on an annual basis from now on.
Thank you, and for that announcement, this is very important, that we never forget our veterans, especially those ones who may be all but sacrificed. And I know how much time went into this, well, actually, I don't, but I did talk to one person who was very much involved in it, Jerry Puff, and he was telling me how much time he put into this, all the year time he's spent his own money and putting hundreds of miles in his car and doing research and this is a very important event and these men who made it possible to serve our act.
On to the business. First unrecorded demonstration, Tom Holman.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I have three things for your consideration this morning. First is the approval of the contract with the Center for the Hearing and Debate Services for the provision of American Sign Language Translation. Let me add, again, that it would also include some foreign language translation services. These are services that we provide for litigants in court process. So I'll ask your approval of that contract.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Does the favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. The motion carries.
Thank you. The second thing I have is I'm requesting your approval for a three-year contract with Thompson Reuters for the provision of electronic research documents for the law library, the judges, and for public access. I'm asking for your approval of that contract.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
I'd just like to say this, that I asked Tom the other day about this and we can be blessed, at Butler County, we have a very good law library for public asset access and he pointed that out to me and why we spend some of this money. So I'm very, very grateful for that. I know I've used the law library, praised it myself, and see it's really a good person. But that does have some of the cost on these books we get, but it's very important, I agree with Tom, so thanks for doing that, Tom.
And the final thing I have for you this morning is approval for a letter of understanding of Thompson Reuters that changes the provisions for the print media that we get. Because some of what we got in the old contract was printed, is now electronic, it just clears up the language of what's going to be on each side of the pile. I'm asking for your approval of that letter of understanding.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
Discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Colin.
Next item under assessment, Chris Savitt.
Hi, Chris.
Good morning, gentlemen.
I'd like to ask approval for a maintenance agreement with Coffee Con Inc. the amount of eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars a year for our Monocam microphone reader and processor.
I'll make that motion.
Discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thanks, Chris.
Next, under Community Services Area Agency on Aging, Billy Joe Evans.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are requesting your approval to renew contracts with the following providers serving the Order of Adults Through Home and Community-Based Service Programs. Terms of these contracts are from July first, two thousand and thirteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. There are no county funds utilized. Payments are made from our aging broker. They are as follows: Life Plaza for Adult Day Services, Personal Touch Home Aid of PA, this is Remo Water Behaving, Bill Perce Services, BBS Personal Care Products, this is for medical supplies and equipment, and Blackburn's Medical Supply and Equipment, this is for also medical supplies and equipment.
Okay, can we do this as one motion?
You can do it as one motion. They have to, the motion has to specifically include all the items.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Billy Joe.
The next items, under Community Action Development, on behalf of Jane Kennedy, we're asking for your approval to ratify the submission of the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen Work Ready Program Contract Documents to the PA Department of Public Welfare. We'd ask your approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, we're asking your approval to submit the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen Medical Assistance Transportation Program Participation Grant Agreement and Assurance of Compliance and Allocation Acknowledgement to the PA Department of Public Welfare. Butler County's allocation for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen is two million, four hundred and one dollars, and four hundred and one and seventy-seven dollars. We'd like your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. The motion carries.
Last item, we'd like to request your approval to submit the Third Amendment to the fiscal year two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, Community Services Block Grant State Contract to the PA Department of Community and Economic Development. DCED has awarded us a tentative adjusted allocation of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars for two thousand and thirteen, but they're only committing a contract fee of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars for the first three quarters. This amendment is for a new contract amount of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars for two years. We'd ask your approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that.
I'll second that. Discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, under Community Development Block Grant Program, Wendy Leslie.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're asking your approval of Red Resolution, two thousand and thirteen dash fifteen, an excessive force resolution in order to be in compliance with the statements and assurances in the Community Development Block Grant application. This is a requirement of the grant and is directly linked to the civil rights part of the program. Basically, it is saying that the excessive force will not be used in removing people from peaceful, nonviolent demonstrations. After working with Sheriff Sloop and Solicitor English, we believe this resolution has the language needed to remain enclosed with the grant and without interfering with any other authorities. Our county sheriff's office has a use of force policy in effect, this does not change that in any way. We ask for your approval.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, under Planning, on behalf of Dave Johnson, we're asking for your approval of the annual contract, Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission. This is for planning services under the Unified Planning Board Program. Term of the agreement is July first, two thousand and thirteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. The total amount of pass-through planning funds is seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars, which requires a county match of four thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. The motion carries.
The first item, under Commissioners, you'll recall that we opened proposals at the last public meeting for architectural and engineering services for the Cranberry Magister Real District Justice Office Project in Cranberry Township. We received five proposals for architectural services. They were from Foremost Group Architects in Butler, PA, for forty-three thousand, five hundred. Architectural Innovations in Pittsburgh for seven percent of the construction cost not to exceed forty-six thousand. Stand Tech in Butler, PA, for eighty-five thousand. Polygraph Architect in Pittsburgh for ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. And RSC, RSC Architecture in Westford, PA, for eight point five percent of the cost of the building construction. And we received seven proposals for engineering services. They were for, from Foremost Group, again in Butler, for forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Architectural Innovations in Pittsburgh, PA, for nine percent of the construction cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars. Stand Tech in Butler for thirty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. Polygraph Architect doing business as Sin Tar Inc. in Pittsburgh for a combined architecture and engineering services of ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. HRG in Cranberry Township for forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Olson and Associates in Butler for thirty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. And Pedersen and Pedersen in Valencia for twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. At this time, we would like to make a recommendation for award for these two sets of services. The first would be for architectural services and that would be to Foremost Group Architects in Butler, the amount of forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. We'd like your approval.
Is there a motion? We approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Again, I'd like to comment on this. This is really, I think, some people don't think we agree on anything, but I think we were very thankful that a lot of bids came in on this. They were very competitive and I was very pleased by both firms and how competitive the bidding was. Sometimes we don't bid enough, but I was very pleased by these firms, and there was a lot of price difference, so we were very thankful for that. Thank you.
Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, for engineering services, we would recommend awarding contract to Pedersen and Pedersen of Valencia for twenty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. We'd like your approval.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we ask for the approval of a contract with municipal finance partners for preparation of an actuarial experience study as authorized by the Retirement Board on August fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen, in the amount of eight thousand dollars to be paid from retirement funds. We'd ask your approval, and Controller Jack McMillan is here representing the Retirement Board to answer any questions.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Jack, would you tell us, the public, why we need it, please, or just, yeah, sure, Jack, if you would, why we're spending the money?
Good morning. This Retirement Board and this Board of Commissioners has taken some very proactive steps over the last several years to improve the overall management of the pension fund. We've removed, or rather eliminated, about over a million dollars of annual costs related to management of the fund through shifting that what are known as passive or index-based investing. This is the second part of that process. It's just as important and we're looking at the liabilities of the pension fund and this is, in essence, a quasi-audit of the assumptions used in determining our liabilities. It is also a, an obligation we have under some new requirements that are going to be set for the Retirement Board that will take effect here in the next twelve months. Those requirements are set by the Government and County Standards Board. The firm is a, is one of only two firms, mine always, that does actual rural services for counties, very reputable firm. It was my view that the fee, professional services, is certainly reasonable for a hundred and sixty million dollar plan and it was also my view that it's probably better not to have the experience study, and that's what it's known as technically, done by someone other than our own action writer for the purposes of independence and a proper audit, if you will, of those, of those assumptions that go into the liability that we all have to address as Pension Board members. So that's a, that's a short answer to it.
Thank you, and I think we should need to state to the public's benefit that our pension fund is in much better shape than many of the counties in Pennsylvania, the state of Pennsylvania. Theirs is really terrible compared to ours as far as the percentage we have funded.
Yeah, and again, that is a compliment to this Board of Commissioners as well as the Retirement Board made up of three Commissioners. the Retirement Board, made up of the three commissioners, the county treasurer, and myself. We've done things that unfortunately many others have ignored, and the primary function is making that annual appropriations to the pension fund. The very fact that we're doing progressive kinds of actions like this today speaks well, and even though I'm kind of closing out my tenure here, there's a couple little things on my checklist that I kind of want to complete before I leave office and, I guess, become recipient of pension dollars.
I don't think so, I'm sure.
And, yeah, and this is required by Gatsby, the new Gatsby rules, and it's only done every approximately five years, so it's not like it's occurring at eight thousand every year approximately five years.
Right, it's also a recommendation under Act 96 Pennsylvania statute to apply to our pension fund. So it's just a good thing, you need to do it periodically and essentially, it just gives us to prepare ourselves, an individual who's doing the service is an actuary, a licensed actuary, and will come back and tell us quite simply, you know, maybe this assumption that you make, you might want to, you know, look at it a little closer, or this one, you know, is, you're right on target, actually, what it's all about.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack, thank you.
We have a question in a second. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Question carries.
For the next item, I call up Human Resources Director, Larry Alton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm requesting your approval to enter into agreement with Butler Memorial Hospital in to your agreement, just the renewal of our employee assistance event for our employees at $23 annually per employee.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? Question carries.
Thank you. Our last item, through Chairman, we'd ask your approval of a statement of work from Pidney Bose to implement their SENS Suite Live system to allow electronic processing of certified mail and return receipts. The cost for the system is $398 per month for a contract period of 63 months, and includes software installation, testing, staff training, maintenance, and rate updates. This should allow us to save on the postal charges for electronic, excuse me, for certified mail by doing those certified mail and return receipts electronically. We'd ask your approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Just for the record, Amy, how many registered mail do we send out each year, did you say?
Well, we estimate that countywide, there's about 450 that are processed per month.
Okay, and this will save us plenty because we're not like fine.
Yes.
Running handily.
Yes, especially currently, there's a lot of manual labor involved in filling off the cards and then tracking those certified mails through the system, and that will all be done online.
Thank you, Amy. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Question carries.
That's all for new business.
We have a motion to approve the budgetary transfer.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? Question carries. A motion to approve the new powers.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Question carries. Motion to approve the travel requests.
Some move?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? Question carries. A motion to approve the requisitions.
Some move?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Question carries. A motion to approve the check register.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those in favor carries. Uh, report, Jim.
Okay, okay, my, my report today is, I know Bill McCarrier said it last week, my report today, it doesn't involve him, but it just greatly affected what happened to me in the last week. I had some things that were very eventful that happened in this county, but this, this transpired, this doesn't have anything to do with Bill McCarrier, he did it, and so it does have something to do with him, but it's basically about not him as a personality, but what state law the facts are. And I want to read this off. This is a notation, this is a memo that went to a lot of the county employees on March 22nd, 2012, and I'll explain how this, this affected my life last week. Dear Department Heads within Butler County Courthouse, this is written by Bill McCarrier. This email is in response to inquiries from several of you regarding a request from County Commissioner Jim Eckstein for information. Many of you have asked if you are required to provide requested information to Jim Eckstein. If the request is information that is public and available to any member of the public, then you are required to provide it. I'm going to read that a second time. If the request, this is Bill McCarrier's explanation to the people and the, that work in this county, how to treat me. If the request is for information that is public and available to any member of the public, then you are required to provide it. Okay, and he went on to say how he realized that I was bothering them when their everyday work and distracting them. Now, what he told them was something that was really false with state law, that has, you know, he gave them erroneous information. This week I had a problem with getting information from different row offices, or row office and a CYS. They believed I shouldn't have the information. This fact was perpetuated by Bill McCarrier, the chair. Now, these, this actions almost led to my arrest, okay? This is not funny, through a false report, okay, on a meeting I was entitled to go to. False arrest, false reports, and also information I went to get at CYS that they know that the reports aren't even available to the public, payroll records, and it was declined to me by Carmen Scotty, who was there, Joyce Ainsworth, and I had to go to the solicitor to get it. Now, the public is entitled to this information. Now, I couldn't get that until I did this. Now, while I was doing this, and why this disturbs me so much, is I went to do this, I've done this three times since I've been Commissioner, okay? Laura Kubli, it was in the paper, on this weekend's paper, that Laura Kubli's been fired, she's a CYS worker, okay? And basically, she called me, and I've only done this three times, because the other times, well, I've checked it out, but it didn't really follow through, you know, some of the things, people do things they shouldn't do, but, so I've only done this three times, it's not like I'm a crying wolf or something. So Laura Kubli, to my dismay, she got fired, she was suspended for five days, she called me and asked me to check it out, and then she got fired. Now, who is Laura Kubli? She is a trusted caseworker for CYS for over 18 years.
Commissioner, I would, Commissioner, I would ask that you not discuss.
It was public, it was public.
I would ask that you not discuss the specifics of any personnel.
I'm not doing any specifics, okay? She, she gave me her, you know, she gave me her okay, too. I'm not discussing. Laura Kubli is well-respected in CYS, she has 18 years' experience, she has a bachelor's degree in teaching from the University of Pittsburgh, she reserved her teaching certificate, she is a four-year veteran from the Army with overseas tour duty, she has two master's degrees relating to social work, she has 18 years' experience in children and youth service under at least three administrators. What are the high points in Laura's 18 years of service? She is a level head, she's a well-respected role model for our peers and advisor for the other CYS workers. Why is a CYS worker's job difficult long-term? They see, they have to deal with society's ills on a daily basis. It involves little kids, they witness acts of physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, unsanitary and deplorable living conditions, parents that don't, that don't send their kids to school, parents addicted to drugs or alcohol or both, parents that are more concerned about their next fix than their children. My grandmother always said you needed a license to have a dog, but only one, anyone can have kids. Now, the ability to deal with these complex and disgusting problems in our society is what makes CYS employees so special. It sets them apart. That's what makes Laura Kubli and the rest of the CYS caseworkers special. This is what makes the recent firing of Laura Kubli so despicable to me. I personally talked with the individuals involved, that is my right, I'm allowed, I have the right to go to meetings, to, to do this. You know, Bill McCarrier says I'm not, it's strictly counteractive to state law. Absolutely, he's, he's violating my rights. I examined the personal records, none of this is funny.
I think it is.
None of this is funny.
Because it's a lie.
Okay, well, I examined personal records, I have this all in writing, by the way. I have it in writing, I'll put it on the website if you think it's a lie. I solicited legal advice from attorneys about the case. Here's Mike English's, the charge, he, you know, conspiring with and aiding and abetting for the purpose of interfering with the custody. Sounds to me like they're robbing a bank here, and, yeah, conspiring with and aiding and abetting with another, the purpose of interfering with the custody of a child on their day off. This is a total deception of what actually happened that day. A judge and voice were involved in this deception. We're supposed to believe that a magistrate and voice were involved in this, okay? They were, they were doing it, okay? She was just advising a friend. These accusations against Laura Kubli are blatantly false. These actions will not stand. This dismissal is an egregious, overzealous reaction on the case in merit. These actions are not based on merit, but on retaliation for a filed grievance about Dale Pinkerton two and a half years ago. She won, she had a legitimate grievance. He read her, he read her personal things off at this meeting. He would be ashamed of himself. There was no shame, okay? There was no shame, he did it, and now I believe it's retaliation. I asked the tech, the defense asked me to testify in this case, and I will address in the truth at that hearing. My job as Commissioner is not to represent, my job as Commissioner is to represent the taxpayers of Butler County and to formulate opinions through research, and Peggy helps me on that, she's an excellent researcher, and a lawyer, interviews, meetings, emails, phone calls, et cetera, with the results being, you know, to form a philosophy, to be in the center, not to take this side or that side, to do every case, and that's my job as Commissioner. My job is to not always take one side and then issue, you know, which is accepted around here. I want to break this cycle. It's like they dictate protocol around here, and if you're not with them, you're against them. So you're either for us or against us. If you're against us, we will publicly demean you and take retaliatory action. I believe that will ruin you financially, okay? That's what the protocol is around here. Us in this case being Dale Pinkerton and Bill McCarrier, that's the ones that are spearheading this. The recipients being Jim Eckstein, Laura Kubli, Joe Donaldson, Kim Faust. This, this mentality, you're either for us or against us, was a statement made by George W. Bush after we were attacked on 1011 at the Twin Towers, more people died that day than in Pearl Harbor. This is not appropriate for county business. You're either for us or against us, and there's these mendicants and brudges. It's not good for the employees, it's not good for the taxpayers, and it's not good for the county. These, the policies implemented by Bill McCarrier and Dale Pinkerton will not stand. This retaliatory act spearheaded by Dale Pinkerton and Bill McCarrier last week against Laura Kubli and Jim Eckstein will not stand. Bill McCarrier stated that I am only entitled to as Commissioner, as I went over, to the information the general public's, and that's why I almost got arrested and why I wasn't allowed to have information that the public is have from CYS. I was denied it. You know, with the threat of arrest. As the general public by the solicitor, Mike English was sitting right there, and I asked him to make a decision on whether I was allowed to sit at that meeting. He delayed it until the sheriff's deputies, who got false reports about me sitting into the office, he delayed it, this is nothing against the sheriff's deputies, they delayed it, and they got false reports, and they acted on those false reports, he delayed it until he saw me almost doing, getting cuffed. I don't think that's funny. You know, I don't think it's funny, it's despicable, okay? The solicitor's job is to act in the best interest of Butler County, not to be a private counsel for Bill and Dale.
Mr. Eckstein?
Not to stand idly by while I get arrested and protect the rights. Follow state law.
I would like everyone to know that I've been on vacation for the last 10 days, and I knew eventually he'd get to my name, because he's done that for five and a half years. It's always someone else's fault other than his. I, in my whole life, have never run into an individual who is so, so into himself that all he can say is "I" and "me." What we have done and what's happened, we follow the guidelines of the managers of the departments, and the manager of the departments feel that this is the right way to go, we have to stand behind them. So, in my opinion, they've done the right thing, even though I wasn't here. And Jim, of course, he blames it all on me again, and Bill, but I'm telling you, folks, this man, unless you agree with what he wants, you're, you're wrong, and he's going to go after you. Thank you.
I have it in writing, in the post office, sir, okay? I have it in writing.
You're done.
It's up on the internet.
Anybody can put anything in writing, Jim. I, I find it very amusing, Jim started his report by saying he wasn't going to the great beat of day, and spent the whole report time trying to tie me in with this incident that he referred to. In the meantime, Jim has gone down as a children and youth department and terrorized an employee down there, and we have that in writing, too, Jim. So that's all I have to say, in the interest of time, we have another meeting to go to, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Is there a second? I will second it. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Meeting is adjourned. Okay. Conference time with the media. Kayla?
I have your questions. Thank you.
Tom?
I have a few. Commissioner Eckstein, are you referring to, what Commissioner McCarrier just referred to alleging that you terrorized a CYS employee, is that when you were, quote, "almost arrested"?
No, that was not, that was in, that's when I was going to a meeting, and I have anything right to do with, that was Michelle Mostella that did the false report, and the deputy, the deputy in charge said that Laura, I don't have any direct on this, but Laurie also made the complaint, okay? That's what the officer said to me, okay? That's what the officer said.
What officer was that, Commissioner?
Wait, I'm sorry, you can't speak at this time.
Commissioner, what?
Wow, an attack.
What was the incident between you and Michelle Mostella, what happened there?
Well, I was going to a meeting about Laura Kubli's hearing, which I have every right to go to, and she wanted, she jumped in front of me and tripped me, I had a handicap, she jumped in front of us, you know, and, and she made these accusations, which the sheriff's deputies responded to when they called, okay? They didn't, they didn't work there, they just responded to an incident, okay?
Sheriff, can you make any comment about your deputies responding to this incident?
They did.
But no one, that did not result in anyone being charged with anything? Commissioner Eckstein, the, what's your reply to Commissioner McCarrier saying you terrorized a children and youth employee?
That's a, that is a ridiculously false statement, that is a ridiculously false statement. I asked him to provide information, okay, that is completely erroneous. If there's a complaint, I did not do it, if there's a complaint from this person, go to the EEOC and press charges, okay? There is no, there is no validity to them, okay? There is no validity to them. It's ridiculous. Just have, you know, all these people weren't in a line, it's ridiculous, okay? Go to the EEOC and make a complaint if there's a valid complaint, okay?
Is there an internal complaint about the incident?
Well, ask them, ask the solicitor, Bill McCarrier, to ask Bill McCarrier.
Is there an internal complaint against Commissioner Eckstein?
I would advise against any comment regarding any internal complaints other than what we've already heard.
Okay, in the vice of counsel, I will make no comment on that.
The, Carmine, do you have any response to him saying, you mentioned your name and Joyce's as refusing to give him information?
As I understand, my response was that the information was available through, from what I said, what he was requesting was some time records on an employee, and what I said was that was available through personnel, because I don't see our offices as being the official recorder of time, that personnel keeps those records, and since I cannot tell personnel what to do, I felt that he should make that request, I think I said, the solicitor, Mike English, was that we weren't going to provide the information, it's about, it's about getting accurate information.
Laura, he said that the complaint against him, where the deputies responded, was both Michelle and you?
That is incorrect.
So you did not, you were... So you did not, you were not one of the people that complained as far as wanting deputies to respond?
That is correct.
And I'll ask Michelle this, of course, but as far as you know, is Michelle who requested for help?
The request came from my office, it was in my office. Michelle requested our switchboard operator out, trying to call the sheriff's department to order.
What did she say happened? And Mike, can you make any comment about the Commissioner saying Laura Kubli was fired for supposedly taking, involving herself inappropriately in a custody case?
I want to make no comment on the substance of any argument.
And right now, the county doesn't have any, anything from the union or the former employee herself, as far as-
I'm not going to comment that.
Thank you, that's all I have.